Testing, testing, testing. Testing.
Now you can pause the meeting.
What about Tinuba?
Those places we said we barely see over the diocese, maybe that was... Was that Tulare or was that?
Yeah, I don't remember.
I don't either.
I do, I remember but I can't remember.
I don't think it was Tinuba's. Tinuba's is kinda like this.
Maybe it's Wood... No, we didn't go to Woodlake.
Woodlake is just an old... Woodlake is a little higher, I think. We did, we did...
We didn't go to Woodlake this year, did we?
Not this year, last year.
Oh yeah, Steve, I watched Friday night, I didn't see how Tinuba did, I watched the Friday, I usually watch the late...
They had a bye.
Okay.
So they're playing Xerzer.
I kept looking and I think I could scroll across the bottom.
They're playing Xerzer this week.
Okay.
They, you shouldn't...
I guess they do, you can just hunker and you can hunker out of there.
Only lost a beautiful good B G O hamper.
Good morning, welcome to the November 4th Flaherty County Board of Supervisor meeting. If you would please rise, we will be led this morning by Supervisor Vanderpool in our pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. I've gotta tell ya, I enjoyed hearing the little voices this morning as we were pledging the flag. That was, that was pretty cool. So our, our first item of business today is Board of Supervisor matters, Supervisor Enos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Friday I attended the Sutton Pistachio Big Harvest Luncheon, they're finishing up their harvest out there. Had a record year and if you talk to the management, over half of their pistachio trees aren't even in production. So it goes to show you pistachios are the, one of the biggest, they're gonna be the biggest nut probably in Tulare County eventually, if they aren't already. But anyway, we're 600 people there, it was, it was great to see everybody and talk to them a little bit about economic development and fact that we're not trying to attract as many... We could love to attract new businesses here, but what we really wanna see is the businesses that we got here expanding and creating more jobs for these communities, especially like Arabella and the Incorporated areas. So between them and Sierra Forest Products and about three packing houses, they pretty well anchor that town. So if, I think they employ almost everybody in that town, there's 600 people there from Sutton. So it was great to be out there and see those folks and be a part of that celebration. Today, after the meeting this afternoon, we'll be going, I think Supervisor Rashida's gonna go by too. We had a lot of people we knew. Beckman Coulter's in Porterville, has been there for years and years, been one of the big anchors for the Porterville area. Employ a lot of people and very good jobs, they, their pay scales up and so it's good to, it's good to go by and see those folks and had a little scare years ago that when they did some pollution into our groundwater out there, but they stuck with it and they, they got that all taken care of and they're still a big, big anchor for the Porterville area as far as employment and jobs. Tomorrow we'll be going to the AgTech Building in Tulare for a water meeting put on by Southern California Edison. That'd be from four till eight tomorrow at the AgTech Building. Thursday I'll be meeting with the folks from Posey in Panoramic Heights area. They want to try to form a fire district up there so that they can get fire protection seven days a week. So we'll be meeting with TCAG and of course it'll have to go through other agencies too to make sure it happens. And of course Rita will be involved in any kind of district that is put in place because she has to collect the, the money to collect the money, so. Friday I'll be going to the Porterville College, they're having a special veterans celebration out there for veterans that they're working with and trying to get further education for them. I'll be taking the proclamation out there. And then on Saturday I'll be going to the, to the Porterville Fairgrounds for the Heritage Dinner that night and looking forward to that, so that's kind of all I have, thank you.
Supervisor Rashida.
Last Wednesday I traveled to, well actually Tuesday I went to Sonora and I took a tour of the Rim Fire. And that fire was last year and it's one of the biggest fires we've had in the state of California. Couple facts that I learned was that we only harvest in the state of California 7% of the growth in the forest. And we import 70% of our lumber into the state of California. So there's something wrong with that dichotomy of we're not keeping up with the growth of the forest, the manage of the forest, yet we're getting lumber in from South America, Canada and in other states. We had a tour of the Sierra Pacific Mill and the question came up, how much does it cost to put a mill in? Because obviously we do not have enough mills left in the state of California via the Spotted Owl fiasco that we had. It costs a modern mill about $18 million to put in. And that's about $10 million for the mill and about $8 million for the cogeneration plant that goes with the mill. Now that mill is totally self-contained with this, with this cogeneration plant. The other thing they kept emphasizing was when they rebuilt that mill, all their equipment is portable. That means that they can leave at any time and take that equipment with them. And the lumber is cut by laser and computer, it's not the way they used to do it. I mean, it's a really fast process and it really cut down the amount of labor. They're the only mill within 200 miles of Sierra Forest Products to the north. And because of the Rim Fire and because of the recent King Fire that we had this year, most of our mills in Northern California from Sonora North will be harvesting black logs. Black logs or burnt logs and that 7% annual growth that we've been harvesting will go by the wayside because they have to harvest these trees within two years. There's a good chance from the lumber we, I saw up there, that some of that lumber will not last two years. The recent Sierra Pacific is located in Sonora as they own thousands of acres of timberland in the area in the Tuolumne, around the Tuolumne Forest. And if they did not own that timberland, they wouldn't be located there. And that's the problem we have with locating new mills. These, most of the mill companies will not own private timber around the source of timber. So the only way you can put an investment in like that, you have to have a firm contract from the federal government, a long-term contract to build a mill. And we know how good the federal contracts are on lumber, they're basically nonexistent. Saturday Supervisor Cox and I attended the Farm Bureau Young Farmers Event, it was a great event. We had a lot of people and we look forward to going next year. Last night we had our regular town meeting in Three Rivers and we had a presentation about the Sierra Irwin. And that means that there's a study going on about the water sheds in the Sierras. They were able to get a grant from the Department of Water Resources to do this study. And basically all your water above 600 feet is, is produced from fractured rock. It is not from water-based underground water basins, it's from water flowing through to the, to the basins. And if you look at a map of all the wells that have gone out basically in Tulare County or even in the Central Valley, there are very few wells that went out in the foothills and in the mountains because they're getting fractured rock, rock water that's, that's coming through. There's a substantial number of wells in the Three Rivers area that are less than 50 feet deep. This can pose a problem even in fractured water areas because as the drought happens, the water level also goes down in those fractured rock stratas. So if we continue, I'm sure we're gonna have quite a few wells go out in Three Rivers. I've always said up in Three Rivers because there's a lot of, and the planning commission looks at a lot of parcel splits. And the most active place there were parcel splits for years has been Three Rivers. You know, I've always said that we need to know what the groundwater is in that area and we're gonna keep approving these parcel splits. Well, it looks like because of the fractured rock issue and the study they're doing, they're okay for now. So that was quite refreshing. Also we had a presentation by Mike Spata on the Three Rivers Community Plan, which we expect to get finished by next, next winter. And I have to compliment the people in Three Rivers who have been participating in this plan because I remember before I was elected, they started a community plan. And that community plan meeting was like a free-for-all and the supervisor had to be the referee. And during this process, I haven't had to go up there at all to be the referee. So the plans move along very smoothly and that's all I have.
Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Wednesday I attended a groundwater use, land use symposium that was held in Clovis. Pete Vanderpool and I were both there. One of the things that was kind of interesting is that we're somewhat ahead of the curve in Tulare County because they were advocating that in general plans, the protection of groundwater recharge areas, which is something that we did in our last general plan, recognizing that that's a valuable resource and we don't wanna lose those resources if we possibly can, so we've got those mapped and hopefully they'll be somewhat protected. In that afternoon Gene and I met with some CSAC representatives who were doing some outreach to the counties, looking for our particular issues and in fact, one of the issues that we brought up with them, Mr. Rashida, was relative to interaction between the state and the federal government over this matter of land use and while, and, and what, what we're doing or not doing in a national forest and our forest lands to protect against fire, improve our water supplies. And, and really, it doesn't do us a whole lot of good in California to, to do things just as Californians because much of the land base that creates the water where the water falls is in the national parks and national forests and B L M properties, they're federal lands. If we're not working with the federal government, we're not gonna be able to accomplish much in these watersheds. So the need for us to get engaged and there is some money in the water bond, which hopefully is gonna pass today, I think $25 million for watershed restoration type work. And really, for that to be effective, we need to take that and grow that pot. So if we can use those as matching funds with federal government programs to properly manage our forests, we could do a lot to improve our water production at the valley and also reduce the hazards of fire. Finally, I just wanna say that next Tuesday on the 11th, I know there are a lot of events going on for that, that, our national holiday, Armistice Day. And, and Tinuba, there's gonna be their very first, they haven't had one in many years, a parade. So they'll have a parade this, this coming Tuesday and I hope we will all go to those different events to remember those who, who served our, our country. And it's not, different Memorial Day, Memorial Day we talk about people who died in service. We're actually honoring the people who are living who, who honor our country by the service they provide. So thank you very much.
Go ahead, Vanderpool.
All right, just a couple things that I wanted to go over. First of all, I've got my little sticker, I voted, I didn't get it because of an absentee ballot. Supervisor Rashida was just passing them out. So if you voted via absentee and you want your sticker, be sure you grab one before you leave. But that is the single most important thing I think that we as American citizens can do is vote. And if you don't vote, live with the consequences. So make sure you get out and, and exercise your democratic right. Also, I was gonna make a comment about Veterans Day next week. I think it's very important that we thank those who are, are serving or who have served our country. It's a very important function that they provide and provide for our life, liberty and happiness here in the United States while they go abroad and put their life at risk, so, or even domestically. So let's make sure we honor our veterans and thank them for their service as much as we can. And lastly, I, I was hoping Michelle would have like a video camera, a microscope, you could zoom in. I got a little mustache, it's Movember. That's why when Rhonda asked me, she said, you know, I, I, I'm not sure if you wanna be a contestant or a judge. I said, I'll gladly be a judge, 'cause as a contestant I would lose, like, they wouldn't even let me into the room for a contest, but I really appreciate Rhonda's efforts and HR's efforts to really spread the, the word about Movember in Tulare County because it really is about men's health and men's health awareness. This is a great guide to different types of mustaches that can be grown. I didn't see on here shoddy attempts, 'cause that's where mine would fall, but anyways, it's, it's one of those things that I really hope that people will take time to help spread the awareness. It is true that one in two men will be diagnosed with some sort of cancer during their lifetime. And also, there's many other issues surrounding men's health. And the fact that women have a longer life expectancy than men, by almost five years. The average woman life expectancy, or female life expectancy is 81 years, whereas for a man, it's, man, it's 76.2 years. So, you know, there's a lot of health issues in men that are often overlooked, maybe because of different stigmas or other issues, but I sure encourage everyone, if you're a man, go to your doctor, have a proactive health checkup. And if you're a woman, look out for your husband or brothers or friends. And encourage them to go and take care of themselves and be aware of various men's health issues. So that's what I will make my plug about.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Supervisor Vanderpool, giving the male life expectancy. I think I'll go file for my social security.
Hey, thank God for mascara, you wouldn't have anything.
I don't think we had that high-def type of camera.
Well, staying in step with the rest, I've always said, if you live with a woman, you'll probably live five years less. Just don't tell my wife that. Okay, I have a number of, of quick things to go through here. This Thursday, Tulare County Child Abuse Prevention Council will have their training event at 8:30 until noon. I'll be speaking briefly at that. This Friday I'm attending a State Association of Roads event in San Jose on Friday and Saturday. Next Wednesday is a race for, or Tuesday is a race for kids fundraiser. The week of the 17th, our board will be at the California State Association of Counties Conference, which is held in Anaheim this year, so not only will it be dark next week, it'll be dark the following week because of the CSAC conference. Next... I'm gonna skip that one. We do have, folks have been asking about our Mooney Grove Plan. We do have on November 6th, so this week, at 5:30 PM at Cafe 210, here in Visalia at 210 West Center, we have our first public outreach meeting, so we encourage folks to attend that this week. And our second meeting will be set in December. And then that master plan for Mooney Grove Park will come to the Board of Supervisors in the month of January. So we encourage people to participate in those outreach events and look at the plan. It's a very comprehensive plan for Mooney Grove Park and we encourage people to participate in that process. So that's all I have under Board of Supervisor Matters. And next we'll do a presentation given by Sarah Ramirez in regards to Foodlink and Stuffing the Trolley Campaign.
Morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing me a time here to share some of our activities. Just to give you a brief background, Sandy Beals retired after 29 dedicated years to Foodlink. And I'm the new executive director as of mid-August. And I'm here to talk a little bit about the Stuff the Trolley Campaign as well as some of the work that Foodlink is doing. If you're not already familiar with Foodlink, our mission to Foodlink is that Foodlink is committed to ending hunger by providing healthy food and nutrition education to those in need through community involvement. And we just celebrated 36 years. Happy birthday to Foodlink, 36 years old, founded September 24th, 1978. So for 36 years, Foodlink has been locally operated and serving our county. And over those years, what have we learned? Well, shockingly, we know that food insecurity is on the rise. As you can see by some of these trends produced by the Economic Research Service, the USDA, we're seeing an increase in food insecurity all across the country. And I think what's surprisingly demonstrated by these images is that even here in California, where as we know, we produce the majority of agriculture for the nation, we're seeing above-average numbers of food insecurity. We are also seeing over the 20-year period, increase not only in food insecurity, but very low food insecurity. So what does this mean for Tulare County? So right now what this means, that in Tulare County, one in three children are in a home where there is hunger or food insecurity. And we know that these have physical, emotional, as well as social and behavioral outcomes. In physical, in health outcomes, we know that food insecurity is associated with obesity, with some of our chronic health diseases. Emotional, poor self-esteem, depression. But when we think about our educational outcomes, we're also thinking about how children who are coming from hungry homes are unable to concentrate or might have higher absenteeism. And what might that mean to dropout rates, to graduation rates? So these are all things that I take into consideration when I do this work. According to the California Health Interview Survey, we're seeing the same types of numbers among adults. 37.5% of our population in Tulare County is food insecure. We know that also has educational, health, workforce and business outcomes, right? So we have individuals who are, you know, less productive in the works, workforce, less able to work. It's impacting our business and communities. We have more struggling citizens, we have lower tax revenues, meaning that safety net programs are also being cut. So while I share some of these statistics with you, just to give you a little bit of a context, I also want to share some of the positive elements as we get to the Stuff the Trolley Campaign. So Foodlink has nutrition policies and standards. And what you see here is the campaign, the Go Slow Who campaign. The, our idea is to source 50% of our product to be in the healthy and nutritious. 40% in sort of that meteor, mediocre category, perhaps limited fibers, some added sugars, fats and salts, what we might call sometimes food. And 10% would be in that category that might have the highest fats, sugars and salts that are a little bit more calorie dense. And why do we do this? We believe that all Tulare County residents should have the opportunity to make choices that allow them to live a long, healthy life regardless of their income, education and ethnic background. This idea really supports the good health in our county. In this particular county where so many of our residents suffer from costly chronic diseases. We have a variety of direct community programs throughout the county, every district. We have programs in every district of this county. A quarter of our population here in Tulare County is, connects in some way, whether it's our pantry, our Nutrition on the Go program, our drought distribution. Just as an example, our summer lunch program. We had 29 sites this summer and during the 2014 summer. And over 30,000 meals were served to children under the age of 18. We have a Nutrition on the Go program, which is a mobile truck that delivers fruits and vegetables to rural areas, sometimes schools, community centers. Right now our drought distribution, if you're not aware of our drought, drought distribution program, we're delivering boxes of drought assistance, food boxes throughout the county. To date, since the program started in May, we've delivered about approximately 70,000 boxes throughout the county. These deliveries are made every two weeks. I talk about our pantry distributions, a lot of these pantry distributions are USDA commodities. We have over 30 pantries and as I mentioned, about a quarter of our population reaches these pantries. The cost of these pantries is over $100,000 each quarter. Yet, only, only about half of it, less than half actually, depends on the, on the quarter, 30% to 40% is actually reimbursed by the state. So that means the rest of it has to come forward through donations, whether it's voluntary time, through monetary donations. We also have weekend backpack programs. Right now we're working it with two particular schools and what we do is we provide children with backpacks for the weekend so that they have some snacks and foods. Sometimes we work specifically with schools where the administrators identify the students that need this type of assistance. Volunteers, we couldn't do any of this work without, without our volunteers. Generally, we have over 50,000 volunteer hours logged, whether it's in our warehouse, with food distribution, fundraising or clerical work, we can always use volunteers. I also want to raise this idea of sustainability, what we're doing in terms of sustainability. When we think about the fact that we grow so much of our food, yet we know, according to EPA and USDA, that as much as 40% of our food is being wasted. Now this varies from commodity to commodity, but I'll take oranges for example, since we know we grow oranges a lot here in Tulare County. As many as 14% of the oranges are wasted and this is an intentional waste from farm to consumer, before they reach consumer, 14% is wasted. So we can begin to think about how we should have food feeding people, not landfills, of course. We have other ways to encourage sustainability. This AB 152, which passed in 2011, allows for 10% tax credit to growers to donating their product to food banks. We also have the Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Food Donation Act, which releases and protects organizations from civil or criminal liability when they're donating food in good faith to food banks. This might be farmers, this might be restaurants, retail owners. Feel like there's been very little outreach out there to let people know about these opportunities to support the food bank. And this is a program near and dear to my heart and I think some of you are already aware of it. Be Healthy Tulare's Gleaning Efforts and collaborating with Harvesting Hope and, which is growing from one school to multiple schools. And my heart fills with hope when I think about what these incredible young people are doing and I could speak about them forever, but I know I don't have that kind of time. But I love to see this project, multiple generations involved, teamwork enthusiasm, awareness to hunger and awareness to the solutions of how we can participate. And I think that's what I love the most about these young people, is they see themselves engaged in a solution to a problem in the community and that's incredible. So this also brings me to Stuff the Trolley. So along with growing hunger awareness and compassion, we're increasing our collaborations. So this month, throughout the month of November, from now until Thanksgiving, we have, thanks to the City of Visalia, the Trolley visiting multiple school sites. And students are participating and bringing their canned food items over to the Trolley, stuffing it and bringing it over to Foodlink so that we have these canned food items available to the community. And as you see here, so we have the City of Visalia who provides the Trolley. We also have Pro Youth Heart. Many of the schools we're visiting are locations where Pro Youth Heart is already located and they've committed to bringing their staff to help us do crowd control and outreach. And so I'd really like to encourage and challenge the county to participate in this. So the Trolley, we have spots in our calendar still and the Trolley makes any stops here in the City of Visalia. The idea is to... The idea is to get engaged and participate and donate your food and your time. So we're really looking at increasing our collaborations with other nonprofits as a way to grow our sustainability. And another part that I wanted to share, maybe you have already heard the rumors, is that we are relocating our warehouse over to Exeter. We're very honored to be preserving our agricultural heritage by purchasing with the USDA loan, the Pinkham Packing House. And so this is actually an opportunity that we think is going to be wonderful, because we'll be able to grow our local sourcing. As you know, that part of the county, there are a lot more packing houses, a lot more farms. Can we bring more of those resources in and make them available to our residents in the county? We imagine that we'll have a volunteer action repack center, encouraging community kitchen classrooms, so that more nutrition education can take place, so people feel like Foodlink Warehouse is a location where they can participate and learn, and so that we can also have our own community garden and be involved in that education. So again, I'd like to urge you and encourage you to participate in our Stuff the Trolley. I challenge the county to pick a day in our calendar and to get involved. And I thank you for your time. Here's my contact information, and I'm free for any of your questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Chair, just a comment. Thank you very much for the presentation, Sarah, and I think that along with the Movember Challenge that at least one of the board members is participating in, for county employees, I'm sure that that's something, the Stuff the Trolley, we could work out something with either the CAO's office or with HR, and try to pick a date in the county to encourage county employees and county constituents, when they visit county work sites, to bring food items that can be stuffed in the Trolley for you. So I think that would be great.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment, Dr. Mears. You know, I really think that the focus needs to be directed at nutrition and healthy diets, because, you know, when I see hunger and I see obesity, there's a disconnect to me there. If we are starving, why do we have an obesity problem? My daughter teaches physical education. She has a grant-funded program with Dino Public Schools, and they go from grammar school to grammar school to provide physical education. Education, not just going out there playing, but actually educating kids about the whole thing, about diet, proper exercise, and that sort of thing. Her concern is that these kids aren't going to live to be 20, 30-years-old because of the obesity problems that they have. And when you look at the numbers of diabetic people we have in this county, and the people whose kidneys are failing, renal failures and so forth, and so much of it is because of not good, healthy eating, not a lack of calories, plenty of calories, too many calories, but not eating the right kinds of food. And so I personally think the message should be directed more at that than about hunger, because I really struggle, when I hear that commercial that says, "I'm one of six people in California, and I'm struggling with hunger." And I go to Walmart, I walk in there, I don't see somebody walking around that looks hungry. But I see lots of people who are obese. And so I just feel like it would be, to me, it's a better message, because I think it's more realistic. I don't say there aren't people who go without food that are hungry, I'm sure there are. And that's a tragedy, and it shouldn't be happening. But the bigger problem is not that people don't have enough calories, it's that they have too many calories, and they have the wrong kind of calories. And they're not getting enough exercise. So to me, that's the message that should be given out, because I really kind of have a visceral reaction when people say they're hungry and they're obese. It's like, how can that be? If you're hungry, I expect to see people who are, who look like him. And there aren't that many people that look like him.
Well, I think you're anticipating sort of where I'd like to take Foodlink towards, to more of the nutrition education component, which is why I'm talking about those collaborations with groups like Pro Youth Heart and even Choices. We've been talking about, okay, Nutrition on the Go is at these schools where you're currently leading your after-school programs. Right now, Nutrition on the Go for many people might be seen as it's a food giveaway, right? But if there's a way to collaborate with Choices and with Pro Youth Heart and others who are actually doing the education component, something that right now we are strapped funding-wise and staff-wise in-house to be able to do, if I can collaborate and grow those collaborations, Choices, I just found out last week, has four mobile kitchens. Now imagine being able to use these four mobile kitchens when we go out and take produce to a school site, so that there's an educational component involved. My own experience with the Be Healthy Tulare efforts that we've been leading down in Pixley, you know, it is, in my experiences in the clinic, as well as a nutrition educator, you know, it's about being able to not only increase the access to the healthy foods, but be able to help families know how to use them, cook them, you know, preserve them in healthy ways. But I wanted to speak to that issue of the paradox, hunger, you know, obesity paradox. It's really what we know with hunger, is that we have two types of receptors. One is a satiety receptor, that tells us when we're full. And one is a nutritional-related receptor. And so we might be full physically, but we're not being satisfied nutrition-wise. And so we keep feeling hungry. And so there has to be a way so that the education highlights both, both moderation and portion control, but also to think about nutrient-dense food. And I think that that's where that, you know, the Go Slow Who idea, it's about teaching that education and the nutritional aspects as well. So it's not about eliminating any unhealthy foods, it's about the moderation. Let's talk about more nutrient-dense foods. So I think we're going in the same direction.
Great. Sarah, thank you so much for your presentation. Congratulations on 36 years. And it sounds like you threw down the gauntlet and challenged the county, so we'll be talking about what we do with that glove you just tossed down. Thank you. Okay, our next item on today's agenda is a request from Health and Human Service Agency to designate November as Adoption Awareness Month in Tulare County. And John Morrow.
Now, John's here for the presentation, not as a contestant in Movember, I might just add that.
I have a little more touch of gray, Mr. [inaudible].
John, before you start, I want to thank all the children that are here. You guys have done really good today.
Good job. He's done a great job today.
I know this is not the most exciting place to be, but right now, this is all about you guys, okay? This is all about the children.
Good morning, Chairman Cox, members of the board, Mr. Rousseau and Ms. Baleslang. My name is John Morrow. I'm the Deputy Director of Child Welfare Services. Every November is proclaimed National Adoption Awareness Month. It's an effort to raise awareness of the children in the United States who need permanent and loving homes. In the last 10 years, Tulare County Child Welfare Services has finalized 1,395 adoptions. Last year, Tulare County Adoptions finalized 184. Now, the state sets standards about how many adoptions each adoption worker should do, and for our county, that's 10 adoptions per worker, per year. We have 10 adoption workers, and they exceeded that goal by 84% last fiscal year. I would like to ask them to stand, the adoption workers and their supervisor, Kathleen Trevino, and the interns, and just acknowledge the work they're doing. Now, in celebration of National Adoption Awareness Month, we have two events going on this month. We have an event on November 17th, celebrating all the adoptions that have been done this year. And we have on November 21st, which is National Adoption Day, a finalization event at Tulare County Superior Court. Now, those events are not open to the public, but as members of the board, you're invited to go there. If you want to go on November 21st, it's in the Superior Court, it's a lot of fun, and it's pretty emotional, too. I'd like to now invite up two, we have two families here to speak. The first is Greg and Lori McCoy. They've been married since 1989. They have two biological children, Brittany and Jared, and they have adopted three children, Cade, Isabella, and Zoe. Lori homeschools the children, and Greg works full-time. They've been licensed since 2012, and they took placement of the three adopted children. Later that year, they completed the adoptions and closed out their license. They decided to come back for round two, so they reapplied for a license, and were licensed later, a month or two ago, and they're waiting for placement for more adopted children. Members of the board, I'd like to invite up Greg and Lori McCoy.
I want to thank you so much for giving us a few minutes to talk about something that's very near and dear to our hearts. We're Greg and Lori McCoy, and these are our five beautiful children in the front row back behind us. You know, we didn't look into adopting until we were married about 10 or 11 years. We had two kids, we had our girl and our boy, and we were busy, and we were blessed with all that was going on with that, and school activities, and baseball, and dance, and all of that. But as we went along in life, we saw a lot of kids that didn't have the same opportunities that our kids had. And you know, it just, our hearts began to be softened toward that. There are a lot of kids that don't have just the basic things, a family to call their own, someone to tuck them in, someone to show up and make them feel as important in life as they are. And so we decided we wanted to make a difference, and we initially went into it to make a difference in the life of a child. So we looked at all the avenues there are to adopt, and we wound up right here in our own backyard at Tulare County Adoptions, because the need is great. And there are a lot of kids here that really need somebody to stand in the gap and make that difference for them. Tulare County Adoptions was so good to us, they held our hand and walked us through the process of what it would take to adopt through them. And pretty soon, we were licensed, and we were placement-ready, and, you know, then we were just in the wait. And so after a couple of starts and stops, because adoption is always a journey, we got the phone call we were waiting for. And 12 years ago today, we got the placement of Cade, brought him home as a little baby, and got home, and we're just in awe, you know, of what God has done. Look at this baby we have. And very shortly after that, as we're going through life and all the ins and outs of adjusting to three kids instead of two, we realized that while we got into it to make a difference in the life of that child, and it would change his life, actually, we were changed, and we were the ones that it was just a tremendous blessing to. It changed us for the better in so many ways I cannot even describe. And so you can imagine, it wasn't real hard when five years later, they called us about Isabella, that it was easy to say yes and bring her home. And then four years after that, they called us about this little one, who added some spunk and some spirit to our home. And she is three now, and she is full of spunk and spirit, and lots of fun. And with each one, we were just incredibly blessed over and over and over again. And we are so excited that November is National Adoption Month, because I really think that a lot of people would step out and would do something if they just become a little bit more aware of the fact that, you know, right here, there are needs that need to be met for these kids. It is a, we look at our family now, and all five of them, and from the oldest to the youngest, they are so close. It has nothing to do with age difference or gender, they're family. And adoption was just a way that our youngest three came to be a part of our family. It doesn't define who they are in our family, and I love that. They're just our kids, all of them. They fight, they play, they laugh, you know, they're involved in all the activities. But it has changed us, and it has changed them. And I'm so proud of the family that we have today, because we have just been incredibly blessed by it. So I'm excited for the events that will go on in November, and I'm hoping that a lot of, it's our hope and our prayer that a lot of hearts will be changed, and some people that are called to do it will step out and, you know, begin the process, and we'll see a lot more kids come up and find those permanent homes. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to invite up Stephen and Sarah Chandler. They've been married since 2002. They have two biological children, Addison and Ella. They have two adopted children, Jeremiah and Blaine. Sarah is a stay-at-home mom, and Stephen is a dentist. They've been licensed since 2013 and took placement in 2013. Members of the board, Stephen and Sarah Chandler.
Morning. Thanks for the introduction. Blaine's been patiently waiting to come up. He's super excited about the opportunity. Very well spoken, I guess we'll express some of the same sentiments, but we too have two biological children, Addison, who's 10, and Ella, who's four, who are in school at the moment. But we were told, after rounds of infertility treatment, that our two, well, at the time, that Addison was a medical miracle, and that we shouldn't expect any more children. And we felt strongly about family, and much like the family that just presented, felt the need and the ability to bless other children. And much like them, we found that the blessing all came to us. We initially approached it with the idea of a newborn, because we didn't, we didn't know exactly what to expect and how that was going to integrate in with our current biological children. But after taking, after taking the classes, and still with that thought in mind, we were approached with the opportunity to adopt two boys. And they did a great job of allowing us to meet, have our children meet together with the boys, see how they interacted. And after much thought and prayer, thought this is exactly what our family needs. Much like what's been said, it seemed like it all, what we had to offer, and again, I would say that the blessing's been all ours, to have two wonderful boys in our family, seeing how they have become, not just legally, but emotionally, and in every way, our sons. And we're grateful, we're grateful for that blessing in our lives. So you can't get emotional, come on now. But we're...
He does the talking.
Yeah, exactly. But we've been extremely grateful for the process. We had approached it from different avenues, whether it was private adoption, we looked at different things, and then through my work, I had met a couple patients that had adopted through the county and had nothing but good things to say. And so we went for it. And again, I think it's a blessing to the boys, but more than anything, a blessing to our home. We're grateful for our caseworker, for the time and effort that she personally put with us, making sure that all the needs were taken care of. Initially, seeing, you know, Blaine had some speech delay, and getting us all the resources and things that we needed, and then when those resources weren't needed anymore, to stop that, and fun to see the progress with him and JD. So I think that's all we have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. I do have a proclamation here that I would like to present. You know what I'd like, if I get the families to come on up, if you guys all like to come up here? Because this is about you, this is not about us today, this is about you. So I do have a proclamation designating November 2014 as Adoption Awareness Month. This is a subject near and dear to my heart. Oh, you guys can come on around here. We'll let you pass the secret door. So again, this is all about you guys. We are so happy that you have found the home that you are supposed to be in, and we know you guys will grow up and have wonderful experiences in your life and your families. We're so thankful for the workers in the county who make this their goal, you know, doing two-to-one. I mean, that's pretty amazing. I am thankful that you exceed the goals that have been set by the state. I think that's a tradition we have here in county. Let's look at what the state does, and let's do the real job. So thank you for your hard work, it's much appreciated. I know, right now, as we speak, I have a son doing the DEI training for their adoption that they're preparing for. So thank you for all that you do, and families. I want to present this proclamation to the children, so we're going to take, is it all right if we take a picture, guys? Can we take a picture? Is that all right? Okay, well, we're going to take a picture with you. Let's go around here, okay? Let's go around front, even though I let you back in the secret room. Now, let's do all the kids, you know what? Do you guys mind if, what's your name, sweetie?
Zoe.
Zoe? You want to hold that? Can you hold that, Zoe?
Hold on.
There you go. And look up, look up where the camera is. There it is. Look up the camera, I guess.
Smile.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Tell this is an action item, correct? This is an action item for us?
Real quick, Mr. Chair, before we go ahead and make that motion, I just really wanted to thank the, not only the, the adoption families, the families who've adopted and made children who have not been fortunate to have that gift given to them, have that opportunity. I think that is so special. But I really want to thank our county adoption workers. I think you guys do a fantastic job, and, and as a supervisor, it makes me so proud to hear experiences of, you know, hey, the county does a great job at this. Hey, don't worry about doing it with the, the private adoption agencies. You can do it with the county. They do a fantastic job. And the, the numbers show that, but when you hear that from a constituent, I think it just reinforces that even more. So real kudos to you, and I know that your job can be a gut-wrenching one and be very difficult at times, but I sure appreciate all the dedication that you put into it to make these miracles possible. I, I became a father this last year, and I know what a, what a miracle it is, and, and just, I, I, kudos to you parents for being able to grow your families and, and raise these children. I think it's really awesome. So very, very happy for you, and congratulations, and may, may fun, fun years be ahead of you and your families.
It does take a special family to adopt. Thank you. So we, let's, this will be an action item?
And with that, Mr. Chair, I would move for approval.
Move by Vanderpoel, second by Worley. And it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, our next item of business today will be our public comments. Anybody wishing to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda today, but under the responsibility of the board of supervisors? If you can address either microphone, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Anybody wishing to address the board of supervisors during public comment period? Seeing none, we will move to our consent calendar. We do have an addendum from our district attorney, so the addendum will be added to the consent calendar. Item number 22 is off calendar and will come back at a different date. Are there any items any board members wish to pull for separate consideration?
Mr. Chair, I did want to pull, let me see, it's, I believe it's, it's an RMA item. Yeah, it's item number 31. I, we don't need to pull it completely from consent, but I really just want to compliment Mike Spata and his, his team over there at RMA. I know it took a lot of patience and a lot of extra effort to get this plan approved and moved forward to this point, but I really do appreciate the extra efforts that went into it, and I thank HHSA for their collaboration in helping to make sure that all of the outreach that is done related to these plans is very effective and thorough and as inclusive as possible, and so we end up with a plan that looks as good as these different complete strand, complete streets plans are going to look. So thank you very much, and I, that's all I needed to say with that. And if no one from the public wishes to pull any items from the consent calendar, I would move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Vanderpoel, second by Ennis, and the consent calendar passes with a unanimous vote. Item number 13, a whole lot of people that did, just got appointed to position they didn't have to run for. Okay, we will take up our...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We have a lot of people sitting in the back of the room. There are plenty of seats up front now, so you can come up here and figure out which one of us are in the mustache contest. Because you can't tell from back there.
Well, I was going to say, the category that I would be in was pathetic.
Some of them shouldn't be in.
Okay, so we will take up our first public hearing, which is item number five, request from RMA to certify the final program environmental impact report for Cottonwood Creek Integrated Resource Management Programs, et cetera. And we're glad to see this moving forward.
Mr. Chair, Board, CAO, County Council, good morning. Mike Bond, RMA Public Works. Before the, turning the presentation over to Hector Guerra and Aaron Bach, I just want to make a few comments, if I may. The matter before your board is a public hearing for a final EIR. This is a milestone for the flood control district. Your flood control commission, their hard work produced a list of 15 flood control projects. The top three were recommended to your board for design, designing construction. And on December 11th of 2012, your board authorized staff to move forward with designing construction of these projects. The design process was accomplished in large part because RMA Planning Branch, thankfully, has a excellent and very capable environmental division. So this EIR was done in-house. So this is a very strong group, and we worked very hard in collaboration with, with planning. So in collaboration with Hector and Aaron, we really made a two-part strategy was, that was created. The first part addressed SEQA through a program EIR, and this included all three flood control projects. So I think that was a very smart approach to begin with. But the second part was even more strategic and innovative. Aaron Bach developed what was a very interesting approach whereby concurrently, the EIR was processed, and all of the necessary permits were applied for and obtained. So the strategy, that the team-based approach we used, that worked. So the final EIR is before you. Final EIR is before you, and the permits are in hand. Wanted to touch on the three projects. The juvenile detention facility, or the JDF project, as we refer to it, was especially challenging. The design of Cottonwood Creek was changed numerous times. First, to satisfy the Corps of Engineers. We did this, redesigned the project with direction from the Corps to restore the Cottonwood Creek to its natural alignment. There were also habitat issues and substantial mitigation costs. The, the cost would have easily exceeded the construction cost, so they were substantial. So in response to that, we redesigned the project again, and we redesigned it to avoid those sensitive habitat areas and, and the associated mitigation costs. The other two projects, the Seville-Suntag Ditch Project, the preliminary engineering is completed on the Seville project. We would like to construct that this fiscal year. And the Yetdom-Button Ditch Project is a little farther in the future. That project, in concept, would require a flood control easement, and a substantial property would have to be acquired to do that. So that's, that's a future. So our remaining challenge is to go to construction, and we would very much like to do at least one project this year. And the JDF project is our primary project, very large project. The challenge is to secure grant funding. And that's in a time of severe drought, so we're not too popular at this moment, so. But the team-based approach will be used again. We're underway right now. We have an opportunity with the HUD disaster grant, so we're pursuing that, and we'll pursue others as well till we get a grant.
Ask a question, Mr. Bond. On that particular project, I know that was approved by the Upper Kings River Authority as a project for, that was approved as an approved project, and it goes on a list. Is that expected to generate the funding we're looking for? Are you, are you looking for alternative funding to that because it may be a while off, or what, what's the thinking there, do you know?
Yes, we weren't selected in the second round of the latest IRWIP grants, unfortunately. So we, we'll be happy to refresh and reapply for other opportunities with that IRWIP, but I think we're looking at other, if any, in.
Very good. Thank you.
So with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Hector Guerra.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hector Guerra, RMA Planning. I am the chief of the Environmental Planning Division. And as Mr. Bond pointed out, this is a program EIR, and why is that important? We obviously have three projects that are interconnected with each other. There are three bodies of water that contribute to flows, which will then link together, Button, Suntag, and Cottonwood, and, excuse me, Cottonwood will all flow by the JDF facility. As you recall, a few years back, there was substantial flooding out there, so putting these projects together made sense. When we did one environmental document, the program EIR, you essentially did three EIRs in one body. We did do it internally. We did have help from consultants, biological, cultural. Public Works did a wonderful job with the hydrology and, and the other design that went into the features. I cannot give enough credit to Mr. Bach. He contacted the water agencies. He went to Sacramento to advocate for us, submitted things in a timely manner, and did just an outstanding job of keeping this project moving forward concurrently with the EIR. So we got those lined up. We got the environmental document in hand, and now we can continue to move forward. It's not the greatest picture here, but you can see the proximity to each other on the Seville and Yetdom up in the western portion or eastern portion of the picture. They have two streams there that head to Cottonwood Creek on the south. That's the red line. As those flows join together, they start flowing west, and you get to the JDF area. You can see the, the way the, the creek has been modified originally. There's a couple of 90-degree elbows there, while water doesn't behave very nicely when you get to 90 degrees. These flows typically from Cottonwood are about 1,400 cubic feet. That's the capacity, what it can accommodate. The last flooding event, 4,800 cubic feet. Guess what? Flooding. So with that in mind, we, there's other components to the project that Mr. Bach will go over, and he'll give you some other photo, pictures up here that will show you how the alignment's going to go. So what we did is, obviously, as the SEQA process goes on, we had a scoping meeting. That actually should read August, but it says May. We started a 45-day review period for the EIR itself. At our scoping meeting, no one attended. We notified everybody within a 300-foot radius adjacent to all the project that would be affected along the creeks and the, the ditches and everything like that. So got a couple of phone calls. Does that affect my property? No, it's all on county property. Okay. When will it be done? Don't know. When funding becomes available, we're going to have environmental document in hand. We got one comment. The Army Corps of Engineers, they requested a delineation. And what we did is, we let them know in our response to comments that that delineation is in place. It's part of our appendix C that was done by our biological consultant. So we got the ducks lined up really well, and what we're hoping for here is approval of the projects, and we can continue to move forward with it. Again, it was done in-house. Our staff did, I think, a really wonderful job. We got great direction from Mr. Spata, also a SEQA attorney, so that's always helpful. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Hector. Board, I am Aaron Bach, chief planner with RMA. Now for the nuts and bolts, and of course, everybody's stolen my thunder, so I'll go through this as quickly as I can and not bore you with too many details. Originally, the alignment of the, the planned design was to actually follow the existing Cottonwood Creek. And we realized right away that was fraught with a lot of mitigation and potential impacts to not only the waterways, but potentially to species or other, basically a habitat corridor. So what we did is, we said, the easiest solution is to put this stream to its original alignment, which actually went through the farm fields, which would have less of an impact. So the preferred alternative before you today encompasses not only the Cottonwood Creek redesign to the original alignment, but within that, what you are approving today is the potential to do conservation easements, to do reclamation of the Crispin Mining Pit to use as wetlands. And I'll go through some of the goals or strategies of the program, but I just want you to get an idea of all the project feature, features and components. And in addition, when we did talk to the Army Corps of Engineers, they said, if you go through the original Cottonwood, no, I shouldn't say the original. If you go through the, the existing Cottonwood Creek design, we'd have to go through not only a nationwide permit, but a general 404 permit. So we get a nationwide permit break doing this. So you can see the red areas are potential conservation areas. There are also existing mining pits and a expanded mining pit potentially. So that's all before you today as part of your decision. What we did do, looking and talking to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services and California Department of Fish and Wildlife Services, is what would the impacts of the species be? And so, given all the basic mechanisms for, for mitigations for endangered species, we looked at the costs associated with that, and we decided that feasibly, it'd be better to just do this alternative design, which is a avoidance project. So if you look, whereas before, the creek went all the way to the railroad tracks, what we've done is we've moved it and opened up a mouth, basically at the entrance of the New Line Creek, which will capture all the water that, that will be, that will flood the area to the west. So this avoidance measure saves the county quite a bit of money as far as mitigation for it, and avoidance is always the best strategy. So this, this has moved forward with limited comments from the agencies, and I'll go through the permitting process here a little bit. So we've moved forward quite quickly using that new design. As Mr. Bond said, and as Hector said, we are also looking at Suntag Ditch itself, and that's a relatively simple project, which will have a great impact as far as reducing the flooding potential in the Suntag-Seville area. And it's basically two proposed culverts. As Hector said, we, we were able to do a program EIR, do three projects basically into this program EIR, and actually look at all the impacts to all three projects. And as I've stated, there's also quite a few other lesser projects included in this. And then the Yetdom Project is looking at about, potentially between 40 and 80 acres. If you see the black line surrounding those properties, basically, we'd be putting about a one-foot berm around those properties and looking for a flood easement to basically take the peak flow off in a flood condition. The most, the, the greatest amount of attendance at our scoping meeting, where people who were interested in discussing this, when we told them what, what it was, they, they understood that the flooding would occur for a limited amount of time, and there is obviously the greater benefit of recharging or reclaiming the aquifer through flooding fields in this way versus flooding that Yetdom area. So there, there was no, you know, there was no opposition to the idea, and we haven't really heard from them, them since. Again, this is a long-term project that'll be covered by this EIR. The actual nature of the project will be worked out in finer detail. So this is a, this is a program EIR that does try to tie into the IRWIP funding. So we put goals out there, including flood control, groundwater recharge, riparian enhancements, repair and restore the existing Cottonwood Creek, which would allow it to revegetate, and of course, there's the expansion of sand and gravel operations. So as far as IRWIP goes, this is, should be right in line with the, the funding that comes through IRWIPs. Permitting process, we did go to the Army Corps of Engineers, and as we sit today, they are ready to issue the nationwide permit upon approval of this EIR. We've talked to California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We have a conditional Section 1602 Stream Bed Alteration Agreement in place upon approval of the CIR. Section 401 Clean Water Act permit is in place pending approval of the CIR, and we've also reached out to Department of Water Resources, Central Valley Flood Control District, who is currently making a finding that this project might be outside of their jurisdiction. So we've talked to all the agencies. We've collaborated with the agencies, and we're at a point where we have very limited mitigation measures for this project. We've done the road construction emissions model and found that was less than significant impacts. We did the wetlands analysis, and that was probably the most robust portion of this environmental impact report. And we propose avoidance in almost every instance, but there are standard mitigation measures in case something is found on the site. And of course, the biology is less than significant through avoidance training and stuff. stopping work if any species are found. So not to be too long-winded here, I will wrap it up here with this request, that we certified the final program EIR, that we approved the attached resolutions, including the project, the projects in the final environmental impact report, finding that significant impacts could result from the project but are mitigated to a level that is less than significant by the project features or deliberate mitigation measures, approving and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and authorizing the environmental assessment officer to sign the notice of determination and record with the county clerk. And with that, that concludes staff presentations. I am available, as is Mike and Hector, for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Aaron. Comments and questions. First, congratulations. I think just to put this in perspective, the county's had a flood control district, and the members of the board are the members of that district for, I don't know how many years. But for so many years, all of our money that we had was allocated to the major projects of raising the spillways on our major two rivers in the valley. And we have not spent any money on these kinds of projects. And in the past, we've had some Army Corps funding for studies, which seem to line the shells to different places. They never seem to produce anything. We never get anywhere with them. So I appreciate the fact that, right off the bat, this was a county-initiated by your department program to do something in-house and do something. That's exciting, because we're actually going to get something accomplished. And if you look at that one picture on that Suntag Ditch, by the way, it's called the Suntag Ditch because of Suntag and Evens, the bank robbers, or train robbers, who were shot, and Evens and Suntag was mortally wounded in this area back in the eighteen nineties, and that's why it's called the Suntag Ditch. But anyway, history's left aside. If you were to go out there and look at that, you'd see it's a very small canal, and where we're connecting this up to is like a storm drain or a flood control drain, and that channel will hold fifty times the amount of water that the Suntag Ditch will hold. And what happens in this area is that these are irrigation canals that belong to Alt Irrigation District, and they're not flood control structures. And so if you look at irrigation district, they start with the big part of the ditches at the head, and it gets progressively smaller, because the idea is that they're going to be taking water off the farm for irrigation purposes. That's not a good strategy for flood control, because you need the opposite to happen. You need to actually get them to get larger as they're going downstream. In this case, what happens in a flood event is that the Alta does not put one drop of water into canals. Everything that comes in those canals is coming, in that area, is coming off of the foothills, these ephemeral streams that never flow otherwise, find their way into the canals, work their way down, and flood the communities of Seville and Yetum. So that's how this all happens. That's what this is designed to correct. Just a comment about the flood easement, that's exactly what happens in Yolo Bypass. If you've been up in Sacramento, and you go west of Sacramento, and you go miles and miles and miles and miles, sometimes it's all water. That's the same kind of a thing. Other years, that's when there's no water in it, it's farmed. And in this case, this would be farmed property, and only time that the water would go into would be during these flood events. The question I did have is, is it anticipated that that would still support orchard, or would it have to become more of annual type of crops? Because if water goes in there temporarily, that may be okay, but if it stays very long and you've got orchards, it would end up killing the trees. So it has to, it goes to the effect of how it affects the value of that property, what we would have to purchase. If it could be still used for intensive farming, for nuts, trees, and vines, then there's really very little damage done to the property. It would reduce the cost, I would think, of purchasing. But if we have to limit to how that land gets used significantly, so it's going to be used for grains, or cotton, or, you know, forage crops, that sort of thing, then we're talking about a larger take, if you will.
Yes, and during our scoping meeting, we had a little bit of discussion on that, and it seemed to be reasonable to the folks who were in the room. They did represent everybody out there. Like I said, that would be something that would be considered as we move further into design. We were talking about a one-foot berm here, so it's not holding, it's not holding a lot of water for a long time. It's just taking out the peak, really. So I think it'd be viable, but I mean, we don't have an exact answer for you here today, but we will consider that as we move forward towards the actual design.
Yes, Supervisor Worthley, I think the nature of these peak conditions for this predictor ditch, we're really talking about ours. So, you know, the idea is to provide a control to direct the, divert the water from the channel into the easement area, and then, and then as soon as the peak passes, that can be released. So the control will allow it to release. So the flooding should be very temporary.
My last comment is another related to the recent passage of the requirement that we create these study, or these new organizations that are going to deal with groundwater. This, of course, fits right into that whole concept, because one of the reasons why the ERWIP was so excited about this project is, it's a groundwater, basically, it's a groundwater recharge project. So by taking these floodwaters and putting them into our pits, we're going to, which are sandy pits, sandy bottoms, so they're excellent recharge basins, we're going to be able to help recharge the groundwater with this particular project. And that is what we're going to be charged to do as a county, countywide, with coming up with plans to come to sustainability. So this project, not only flood control, but also becomes part of the sustainability project for our groundwater. So, good job. Kudos to you all. Thank you for your hard work, and I'm very excited about it. Of course, it's in my district, but leaving that aside, it's an exciting project. I'd be, I'd be almost as excited about it if it was in Pete's district, too, but not probably as much.
Any other history lessons today?
Mr. Chairman. I believe in the water bond that it's up right now, today, there is money in that bond to help with this type of project. And, you know, your district's been underwater for a long time.
You know, one name, I think, has been left off of this list of kudos is our CAO, Gene Russo. I can remember sitting with him many times as he's looking over the budget, and he's looking at the special districts, and he's going, wait a minute, there's money here. How come we're not spending this money in our flood control district pot? So I think he deserves some credit here as well, because I, you know, every, every engine gets started with the initial, you know, turn and push, and I think Gene pushed that. I want to thank him for that. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item? You can step forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody liking to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chairman, it'd be my pleasure to move approval of this action to the.
Second. Moved by Worthley, second by Ashida. And the vote is unanimous, and we will cross our fingers on that casting this evening, and we will go after those monies to pay for this. So thank you. Okay. Our next item up today is also a public hearing, a request from RMA to hold a public hearing to close out CDBG Grant Number Twelve-CDBG-8419. Mr. Washam.
Good morning, Chairman, CAO, County Council, Mike Washam.
Mike, did you do this for Movember as well?
Well, you know what? Now that I've moved closer, I can detect. At first, I thought he had some olten in the morning, but I don't know.
Masked hero.
My handle washcloth this morning threw it back at me.
We're here for the closeout of a CDBG block grant from 2012, as well as a program income design phase. The state HCD requires that a public hearing be held at grant closeout to discuss and receive public comment on the county's use of block grant funds, as well as the proposed use of program income funds. In December of 2012, the county was awarded a $1.1 million grant to complete two activities, multi-housing, or multifamily housing rehabilitation and public services. I'd like to mention that there was no county match in this. This was fully funded from the grant. The multifamily housing rehabilitation, we used $925,000 for the rehabilitation of the Nuevo Sierra Vista Apartments in Rich Grove. Project was completed in June of 2014. Funds were used to make energy efficiency improvements to the existing apartment units, including new roofing, insulation, windows, repairs, replacements of HVAC units, and two of the units were remodeled to be fully compliant with ADA regulations. Here's a before and after picture. You can see the new roof, the new facade, the vent on the side. They had the old wood shingles under the eave, and the new roof with the ventilation, better ventilation, the new windows. So this is what was going down in Rich Grove at this apartment complex. The second piece of the grant was for public services. The county partner is very apropos. The Food Link was here to, oh, jeez, unfortunately, she left, I guess. The Dr. Ramirez was here today because this grant also provided $100,000 to Food Link. About $70,000 of that went to those additional lunches during the summer that she was talking about, as well as some equipment purchases. Here's some of the equipment pieces that was purchased with the grant funds, pallet jacks, some sweeping machines, forklift. The total grant funding is broken down like this. $925,000 went to the rehabilitation for the apartment. $100,000 went to Food Link. There was $39,000 that went towards the architects for the design of the rehab. And there was $7,300 for labor consultants to monitor the Davis Bacon requirements, and $29,000 was to the county for staff administration of the program. Program income, currently, the county has approximately $240,000 of program income funds on hand. Staff is requesting to utilize these funds to purchase a water tender for the Fire Department Battalion Two Station at the Doyle Colony Fire Station. Water tenders are an essential firefighting tool in the rural areas, as the fire department cannot always depend on the availability of local water in these rural areas, especially during this drought. Proposed water tender will hold 3,000 gallons and is capable of drafting from hydrant streams and lakes. Typically, the water tenders support engines and/or trucks in the fire situations. Water tenders can also be used in chemical accidents and to clean highways after collisions or pump water in flood situations. So photo of a typical water tender. The proposal is to authorize the use of program income funds to purchase a water tender for the Fire Department Battalion Two Station at the Doyle Colony Fire Station at the county station number twenty. Program income funds, there was a, there was a change recently in the state grant CDBG that requires, before grant funds are expended for a new grant activities, program income funds have to be spent down first. One way that we can capture some of this additional funds that we already have on hand for our next round, this is, this would be a supplemental activity for the 2014 CDBG grant. By doing this, we can, we can be able to spend those and not lose those towards the grant, so we make better use and leverage the grant dollars that we have available. The income program piece of it, what we do, this is a four-step process. Today, we're here to talk about the supplemental activity, which we're proposing, provided that the direction is that we go forward with this. The second thing is, we will send to the state HCD that we're proposing the fire tender for Battalion Two, we'll send some census data for them to look and see that it's an authorized use, an activity, depending on some of the demographics for the area that it's going to protect. Then the state will get back to us and say, yes, that's an authorized, that would be an authorized, appropriate use of the funds. And then we would come back before your board with another public hearing to request authorization to submit the supplemental activity for that grant. So this is the first step of a four-step process. With that, I request the board to hold a public hearing, approve the final grantee performance report for the Twelve-CDBG-8419 grant, and authorize the chairman of the board to sign the report for submittal to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, authorize the county administrative office to sign the final closeout certification documents, and authorize the middle of all signed closeout documents to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. That concludes my report.
Any questions? Yes, it's a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
I would move for approval.
Moved by Ennis.
I'll second that. I think it was a great project and good use of funds.
And the vote is unanimous. Thank you. We'll now move to our untimed items. Number item is, our first item, number thirty-four, the district attorney always asking for something. Request from the district attorney to approve a personnel resolution to delete one existing legal office assistant and add one media specialist position. I was just joking, you know that, right?
Mr. Chair, I just am curious. Dan, is your presentation as thorough as Tim's was recently, or not? Just thought I'd ask.
Probably somewhat truncated in comparison. Morning, Chairman Cox, members of the board.
Morning.
Ms. Bales-Lang, it's good to see you this morning. I'll just briefly touch upon some of the reasons why we're asking for the board to approve this personnel resolution. To me, it harkens back, I don't know if any members of the board were aware, of a complaint of starving cows in Tulare County that was placed on Ellen DeGeneres's Facebook site, and our office was put in there as a point of contact. The number of phone calls and time spent on that unfounded report, I think, really highlights the need in our office for this position. Given the evolution of media and the nature of social media and all the changes that have come, we are of the position that we'd like to try and be a little bit more proactive with the things our office is doing and things going on in the criminal justice system to get the word out to the community, almost like we do with outreach efforts. So we think the time is ripe for something like this. And currently, we, we spend a lot of time in various departments of the office working on tasks related to this media specialist position, and we think this will make the work of that area of the office much more efficient in the long run, and will be cost-saving in that, in that regard. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this personnel resolution.
I'm happy to notice, look on the job description, because we have, you know, a PIO as well in our office. I'm glad to see that the last little sentence, the definition, performs a variety of staff administrative functions, because even the county PIO is not a full-time position, so I'm glad to see that you're going to be able to use, and you've planned on using this person in other functions instead of just being the media person.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any questions?
Just to comment also, from a financial standpoint, the deletion of an existing legal office assistant position, that's not an actual person, as I understand it, but it's a position.
Correct.
So that we're, we're not just adding, 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 which is often the problem with government in general, just adding, 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 but actually making a deletion of one to add another, I think makes, makes good sense, so.
Correct.
It's very supportive.
Okay. Seeing no other, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval.
Have a motion by Vanderpool, second by Ennis, and is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Our next item is item number thirty-five, a request from our probation department to authorize the preparation of an application for funding for Round Two of SB 81 Construction.
Good morning, Chairman Cox, members of the board, Mr. Russo and Ms. Bales-Lang. It is with great pleasure I'm able to bring this forward to you this morning. But before I begin, I'd like to provide you with some history. When I was appointed the chief probation officer on September 26th, 2012, two long years ago, I was really giving a set of marching orders. The first one was to improve the quality of educational and other programming at the juvenile detention facility and the probation youth facility. This was at the direction of the presiding judge of the juvenile court. My second set of instructions was to make AB 109 work really well in Tulare County. And that was provided at the direction of the Tulare County Superior Court, the adult side. At the time, I thought, well, you know, new chiefs are supposed to have a sort of honeymoon period, and I kind of kissed mine goodbye. So while AB 109 was continuing to move along and has been, in my opinion, extremely successful in Tulare County, we started looking at what was needed to improve the quality of programming with. within our juvenile institutions. We maintain a number of commitment beds for juveniles, both males and females, that can last up to 365 days. While we found ourselves able to educate them and many of them received their high school proficiency diplomas, we did not end up having a lasting effect when they returned to their communities. And we began to go in and look at what these individuals looked like. We had utilized for a number of years an assessment tool called the Positive Change Tool that really assessed their criminogenic risk and needs. Criminogenic being the new buzzword for risk to the community. We also went in and did a youth survey. The court was very concerned about the lack of electives provided by the Department of Education within our commitment programs. And the lack of electives left kids leaving the facility without the necessary credits that they needed to graduate. So we did a youth survey to determine what their areas of interest were and what they would like to see provided in addition to the normal educational curriculum. And then we were able to purchase a CareerScope, which is basically a interest and aptitude test. I know that I had those when I was in school. I'm hoping that in some schools, they continue to provide that. But unfortunately, our kids were oftentimes not in school long enough to have one of those administered. So the results were extremely interesting. We found that their criminogenic risk and needs involved their current relationships, their skill levels, both pro-social and cognitive. These kids typically read at the third grade level. Current living arrangements and current school status. All of those issues put them at high risk to reoffend. The youth survey results showed an interest in building and construction, in music and in art, in cosmetology for both males and females, and in landscaping and gardening. The CareerScope results were extremely interesting in that what they may have been interested in didn't necessarily end up matching their aptitude. So it's kind of like I was in high school thinking I want to be a brain surgeon only to discover that I did terrible in chemistry and don't like blood. So as a result, I'm a probation officer. For our minors in care, the matches were for, in the area of mechanics, whether it be a mechanic, a computer equipment operator or repair, computer equipment repair, or a chef. The second one was leading and influencing, which puts them in kind of an interesting category in that they're unlikely, based upon their prior records, to end up being a teacher, a lawyer, although I do know some that probably would qualify, or a computer programmer.
I tell those lawyer jokes around.
Yeah, I know. That was for you, kind of. The artistic, writer, painter, dancer, singer, or graphic designer. And while, you know, we all know that probably one out of a million individuals who would like to be a writer, a painter, a dancer, a singer, ultimately end up being successful, we decided to focus that in on the electives and/or other programming that could be provided by the Department of Ed, which has happened. And lastly was the industrial. A laborer, a machinist, a baker, a dry cleaner, a lathe operator, or a welder. So where we were was we had...
Go welders.
Pardon?
Go welders.
Yeah. We had, again, the commitment youth reading at a third grade level. We had had some prior success in project-based learning, which takes it out of the classroom and you can actually apply a number of particularly mathematical principles. And we did that with respect to our Potter's Field Project that has been ongoing, as well as a grassroots horticulture program that was started by my staff. We ended up renovating a greenhouse that had been on-site and did the environs around that, such as laying a path, as well as planting seedlings for trees and other flowers. And they immensely enjoyed that. The kids in custody tend to enjoy anything outside of the norm, and we just have to understand that that's where they're coming from. The Department of Education had developed electives where credits could be earned towards graduation. Music, food prep, some writing and other artistic projects. And the next step was really, okay, we need to educate them and enrich them while we have them, but what about the possibility of not only a high school diploma or sometimes in lieu of a high school diploma, vocational training with potential job placement? So that when they left our facility, those who qualified and earned both the privilege of participating in such a program could leave with a certificate and based upon our working relationship with the WIB, where we now have or soon to have our own portal to whereby employers can post to a site that are interested in hiring our offenders, both juvenile and adult. So the next step was really to start engaging partners, which we found was extremely and has been extremely successful when it comes to the CCP, the Community Corrections Partnership. So both myself and my staff started working out and making contact with, again, the Department of Education, the WIB, the CAO's office, facilities, the Juvenile Justice Commission, and our professional or in-house VocEd people. We have a cadre of what we call program people who are very hands-on and very skilled in a variety of interesting areas. Our initial plans were to provide classroom instruction that could result in certification through a VocEd instructor, which the Department of Education had agreed to provide. We wanted to purchase a butler building, you know, like a little freestanding thing that could be plopped down out there, utilizing a combination of our inmate welfare monies along with our Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act monies. You know, my commitment, I know, to Mr. Rousseau from the very beginning was to be as fiscally responsible as I can. I don't necessarily spend all the money that I get. So we are able to roll over money from year to year, little pots of money, into trust for emergencies that may come up and/or special projects. And then have the commitment youth earn the right and the privilege of doing the plumbing, the sheet rock, you know, laying the concrete, doing the groundwork. And I was willing to do whatever I needed to do to pay for that with existing funds. Then we learned of this grant opportunity. And it is essentially the round two construction funds for the local offender rehabilitation facilities. And there's a remaining $79.2 million in state-funded lease revenue bond financing from round one. We actually contacted the BSCC because I was aware of the fact that these construction funds were focused on, you know, interior redesign and/or developing soft beds that were non-locked for youth in need of treatment and programming, to see whether or not what we were thinking about doing would be the least bit realistic or feasible. And the answer was yes. It was kind of open. The more creative that you can be, the better off you're going to be in this bid process or this application process. And it would allow basically what our little, you know, grassroots butler building, hit the ground, sort of a project, turn it into something that could be state-of-the-art, that is extremely flexible, that could last us 20 to 25 years. And I thought, okay, let's see what we can do with this. It would require no new probation department staff. Our staff are currently tasked with the responsibility of supervising children in the classroom setting. So this would be no different than the supervision provided in any other classroom setting. We have proposed that we have an auto repair piece to this process along with the welding and plumbing, small engine repair, that would be considered a fixed asset, both the pit and the lift. And ongoing equipment and supplies would be paid for by our department through a combination, again, of inmate welfare funding and J.J.C.P.A. funding. Curriculum costs, we would also absorb if they could not be absorbed by the Department of Education. There are some very innovative curriculums out there for VocEd that involve both the classroom learning or computer-based curriculum, then moving into the hands-on piece. So that is my pitch. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, just to comment. I think that was a heck of a pitch. That was a very, very good job, very thorough explanation of what you're going to be doing with this funding should we be awarded this opportunity. And I think you're doing a great job, Chief. You look at what makes AB 109 so successful in Tulare County. It's outside-the-box thinking. It's trying to equip our offenders with opportunities so that when they get out of our system in justice, they can find a new pathway in life going forward. And this is a great way to do it. In fact, you may even find some reoffending to become a part of this program that are there currently, that know about this and that aren't able to take full advantage of it because it's a real great opportunity. They're going to have a tangible skill set with them if they cooperate and are able to participate and enroll in these programs, that they can then go out and lead a productive life in our society. And it's great to see us investing in our youth. We have to do that. It is the future of our county. So great, great job.
Thank you, Christie, for that explanation. I've been asking for that because I know before it came before us, it was kind of like, where did this come from? And how did it get here? And what is the...
Well, it hit the paper and not because of me, okay? I really like staying under the radar. And when I got the call from the press, I'm like, whoa, we're only just in the, I mean, the kind of beginning stages of this. And thinking about, you know, previously, how we could do it for nothing. I mean, I was out there scraping the ground for donations. I mean, trying to identify business people who would want to come in and instruct or donate equipment. And the upside of that was that the reception within the community was tremendous. And it makes me realize that there are hundreds and hundreds of people out there that want to help and make a difference, whether it's on the adult side or the juvenile side. So, you know, even with this, my hope, if we are able to receive, apply for and receive the money, I really, my hope is to engage the community in this because this is a community problem. Crime and delinquency impacts all of us. And I think it's up to all of us to do what we need to do to resolve it.
Now, a little bit to the nuts and bolts of it. As I understand it, there is a 10% hard match of grant, of funding, if we are successful with this application, of $300,000. And that would be coming from our capital accounts. Is that correct? Not out of your budget?
I hope not.
Oh.
Yeah, that is correct.
Maybe I've waited to say that. And then there's an in-kind match of 15% of $450,000. That would include the land that we would make available for it, administrative costs, so forth. My question, it has to do with that funding. Would that be something which comes out of the existing budgets as opposed to out of our capital accounts?
Well, in this year's budget, we have $700,000 for this project. We originally had about $350,000. We felt, just to be played safe, to double it. Whatever we, whatever is left over after in-kind match, would, you know, we had talked about going towards equipment and what have you inside the building.
Well, I mean, the idea is that potentially, I mean, obviously, again, the land itself has a value.
That's correct. Yeah, we're still working through that.
So there's some benefits that we, there's some money, there's some value that we bring to this in terms of the in lieu of. And then also, I'm assuming that there's staff time and so forth. That would also be a part of our budget. So I guess my hope, I'm saying, expressing a desire that hopefully we wouldn't have to spend the whole $450,000 of capital funds
I agree.
for that 15% match, that we can keep that lower. And as you say, use more. I am concerned about this, and that is, building the building is one thing. And I think you're wise, because I read that a little bit about the application. Whatever's a fixture can be part of the $3 million.
Mm-hmm.
So we want to make as many fixtures as possible. And not much portable.
No, nothing portable. Everything needs to be, yeah.
Bolted down. Because you could easily spend as much money on what goes inside the building as what goes on the outside of the building. And so that was a concern I had, was how do we, what does this whole picture look like?
Well, we're in the process of writing that. And we are committed to having the grant cover as much as we can. We are willing to pick up, you know, the miscellaneous chairs that may be needed or desks. But we're going to make the most, okay, of the grant monies and mitigate as much of the county monies as we can. I've never been one to spend just because I could. And I think that in-kind match can include our, not only the land, okay, but our staff, Department of Ed staff, the curriculum that we plan on purchasing. So all of those things could go in to offset the potential exposure to the county.
And we're also, just to add a few things. Debbie Mon has played a big role in writing the applications for the AB 900 and the SB 1022. It's my understanding she's going to help with this, so.
Yes, and we are very happy to have that expertise. We are. I mean, it really helps us tremendously.
And we've also sent the information over to RMA. They've taken a preliminary look at it from an environmental standpoint. It looks like it's going to be, hopefully it'll be as fast as a flood control project. So, yeah, we're covering all our bases.
And staff from RMA were really excited about this possibility, too. So it really tends to, you know, to impact the hearts of people to do something that potentially can be so positive for a young life.
Christie, now, the instruction on this is going to be done by Teecove? Is that who's going to be...
No, the Department of Ed has agreed to hire a vocational education teacher. And we plan to supplement what perhaps he can't teach hands-on with individuals from the community.
That would be welding and...
Auto repair, small engine.
Yeah, and it's great, too, that you're working with the Workforce Investment Board because they can be the flow-through to get these people jobs once they get the skills. So, great program.
Absolutely. And we have started that. So we're using, we started working with them on the adult side. And to be able to foray our juvenile offenders in there through the certification process is just a win-win with no additional expense to us.
I know you're still filling in all the lines on, you know, expected costs. Can you give us a quick idea of timeline? I mean, when, you know, we're going to, it looks like we'll approve for you to make the application. You know, when does the application do? When do they let you know? I know with the, with our gels, it seemed like it was relatively quick. It seemed like the ink was still wet on the signatures and we received notification that, you know, we were funded through the, through those programs. So I wonder what the timeline is.
The proposal is due on December 19th, and we are madly putting that together. We did, we were able to attend the bidders conference in Sacramento on October 16th. The grant is to be awarded in April 2015. The project must be commenced, completed by June 30th, 2017. We do not plan on waiting to start the classroom or computer-based curriculum with these individuals. So we are going to start that as soon as we can hire ourselves a little VocEd teacher. And so by the time that construction will just be an additional piece. And if, quite frankly, we don't get it, we're still, I still plan on doing something. Pull something out of a hat.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board then for consideration.
Move for approval.
Moved by Ennis, second by Worthy. And it is unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our last item today is item number 36, a presentation by our purchasing department regarding fiscal year 2013 and 14. It seems like, you know, a decade ago, but just months, I guess.
My chairman, board, Jean Rousseau and Kathleen. Started.
I'm not computer literate, sorry. I push buttons, but. Uh-huh, thank you. Okay. From right here. Okay, thanks. So, before I start telling a little bit about what we accomplished in 2013, '14, I just wanted to give a little bit of overview of who is purchasing. So, right now, we have currently eight full-time county employees, and I have two part-time temporary employees that help at the surplus store. And that full-time employees includes myself, which is the purchasing agent. I'm Director of Purchasing. I have two buyers, which currently, I'm trying to fill one. I have one in the works. I just submitted to HR today to try to get the live scan and get that process started. The buyers, they are the ones who's, um, approve all the purchase orders for the entire county. They are the ones who, they're the ones that handle all the ones that are over $5,000 to make sure that the requirements have been met. Anything that may be a capital asset, to make sure that the board has approved it and it is been approved with all the proper documents.
Lori, can you pull that microphone down a little bit, please?
Sure. Is that better?
Don't think the people in the back can hear you.
Sorry. Um, so then, they also make sure that, that any items that need to go out to bid and any proposals that are received, that they make sure all those documents are processed and put those out to the vendors so that we can award those and move forward within our guidelines or it becomes something for the board. Also, our buyers, they are responsible for monitoring all the credit card purchases throughout the county to make sure that the employees are following the credit card guidelines. Then we have Carla, who is my Contracts Coordinator. She is responsible for all the county agreements and our contracts. Our professional agreement's up to $100,000, and our public work switches up to $45,000. If it exceeds the 45, we do do informal bids, and we are authorized to do up to $175,000. All other requests over those limits does come to the board. Then we have Patrick, who is my Purchasing Assistant One. He is our Support Staff. He helps type up the agreements, our contract renewals, and he sends out all the approved purchase orders once they're signed to the vendors, along with other clerical items of the department. We have Karen, who is our Office Assistant Three. She's also a Support Staff member who helps with the clerical duties, making sure that she assists Patrick and Carla with whatever needs we have throughout our office. I have Heidi, who is our Senior Account Clerk. She is not only responsible for paying our bills and makes all our deposits for the surplus store or any of our rebates received. She handles the capital asset inventory for the county departments, and she sends out the preliminary and the final reports each year. And she also handles all the DMV paperwork, and she's responsible for the pink slips, the registrations for all the county vehicles. Then we have Shane, who is our surplus store clerk. He does all the pickups for the county departments for any surplus items that they are no longer needing. He brings them to the store. He prices and organizes the store, and he makes sure everything is ready for our Friday sales for the public. So, that's a quick little overview of who we are. Okay. So, now, I'll tell you a little bit about our accomplishments for this 2013, '14 year. Not only do we have a surplus store that we sell a lot of our surplus items, but we also began using our GovDills.com website for items that were our heavy equipment, what we were having problems selling with auctioneers. Then we also started adding bigger lots of our surplus items to help sell it in a larger quantity and be able to also sell some of the vehicles that we were not able to sell on our lot. We have been able to, been very successful in using this website to bring in a lot more faster movement of our product. We've also added toner cartridges to our county contract, which resulted in a 15% increase to our office depot rebate and better cost savings to our departments. Just an example of the toner cartridges, we had three requests before we made this part of our office depot contract. We had three purchase orders that came through our office that we monitored and verified the pricing that the department had, the vendor they were going to purchase from, and there was over $14,000 savings in just those three purchase orders. So, that was a number liner for us. For $14,000 with three POs, we were definitely going to save county departments some money. So, we added that to our contract to help save the departments money and also to help with our rebate. One of the other items that we've done is we've done the fillable forms on our TC web for the county departments. Along with the fillable forms, which is the requisitions and our modification forms, we've also add different logs to help departments. When they send their request to purchasing, they were not sure where did their request lie into purchasing. So, with the logs, it gives them the status of that process throughout the, from the start to the finish, I guess you want to say. So, it will give them all those updates, and that is uploaded to the website every Monday. Along with the agreement logs, we also have the insurance logs, which tells the departments all the current insurance certificates that we have on file. So, when they get ready to do their agreements, everybody knows Lori does not sign any agreement within the county unless we have all the insurance on file. Also, another note for the insurance, we were having an issue with, when the agreement was signed, the insurance may be current, but then through the rest of the year, it wasn't being monitored. So, working with County Council and with Jean's blessing, we've tried a new effect, and we've added to our AFIN financial space where, when the insurance is about to expire, it will actually stop the payments from going to that vendor. So, it kind of keeps the departments a little bit more on track to make sure that those insurance documents are always current and on file. We also completed a feasibility study for our AFIN procurement process to determine changes that were needed. Along with Jean's help, we were, the AFIN program that we had was just strictly financial, and there was no procurement pieces to allow us to have a way to monitor or to take care of any of our procurement needs. During that study, we found a lot of things is what I call broken in AFIN. So, there's a lot of things that we're not only going to save time and money for the county, but it's gonna, when we're done with the actual project, which is now underway, it should be a lot of savings. During that process, what we're trying to do is we're gonna, when we go out to bid and we get firm pricing, what's happening is we have those in our office manually, but when the departments encumber their money as a blanket purchase order today, we have no idea what items they're buying or how much they're spending. So, this will be a better tool for us to be able to monitor and to be able to know what items are really being purchased so we can possibly get even better pricing available for them. So, in the long run, I think it's going to benefit everybody. For this first step of that process, we have added and already currently have the commodity codes in place. When I first became purchasing agent a few years back, we had maybe probably less than 20 codes. The most popular code that we used was product. Well, I know from all the POs that I signed, that product is used for how many numerous items within this county. There was no way to know what was really being purchased. So, with adding the commodity codes with just, even if it's just a little bit of a capture of each item that each department uses, it will now give us a better estimate of what everybody is needing throughout their departments. We've also offered more training to departments so that they can better understand our current contracts and to help them, the counties save money. During some of my trainings, I have noticed that even though we post a lot of things on TC web and a lot of things that we do, a lot of people aren't aware of what's really there and what tools do we have that will help them. Because we have so many different contracts that are in place, a lot of people would go on our commodity list that's posted every week, notice that we have a contract for, say, janitorial supplies. They would call up that vendor and buy all of the supplies that they needed for their department from that one vendor, but that maybe wasn't the vendor that we had on contract with better prices. So, it's just giving those trainings and understanding for departments have helped tremendously to be able to save that money. We've also increased our product recycling to reduce items from our landfills. We just recently, for those who do not know, one of our biggest accomplishments that we have done is we are getting ready to relocate, and we have completely moved our entire surplus store from the front part of the building to the back half. For those of you who have not seen it, it is quite amazing. We were wondering how are we going to make this happen? We actually went through each and every item and sifted through to figure out what was sellable, what needed to be recycled, and tried to keep the least amount out of the landfills. I think that we have definitely made a lot of progress in making those needs happen. We have definitely brought in a lot of extra revenue for, instead of throwing it away, we actually found ways to recycle it and bring money back into the county. I do have a few stats to kind of give you a little bit of scenario with that. Just for this last short period of time, in 2014, just our recycling alone, we had $1,382 worth of money that we earned for recycling. Just this year alone for 2015, with all the work that we have done in moving the store, we have already earned $3,236, and it continually grows as weeks go by. So, the recycling is working for us. One of the other things that we have done is we've also tried to find other cost savings for the county. We have a program with HP, it's called HP Purchase Edge. All the used toner cartridges that county departments have used, those are all sent over to purchasing. We then box those up and send them to this program. With that, we are earning points, and for every point that we earn, we're allowed to get printers at no cost for the county. For 2013, '14, we ordered a total of 73 printers with a total savings to departments of $37,403.2. Just since, excuse me, August of 2012, we've been monitoring this program to see how we're doing, and I just wanted to share just a little bit. This is county-wide for all of our departments, and since August 2012, we have ordered a total of 173 printers and saved over $70,000. So, the program is working, and it is helping departments with their budgets. And I encourage them all the time, whenever you have printer needs, please try to let us know, and we will do our best to help you. It is determined on, of course, availability and the number of points that we have for us to do that, but we are very successful so far. Along with the program, not only the recycled cartridges that we purchase, they also, since we have added the toner cartridges to our office depot contract, our rep has now calculated all the new cartridges on top of that to earn us points to help not only, basically, we're getting double the points. So, that is a real big incentive for us. So, a little bit about our surplus store and our vehicles. So, our surplus store average weekly sales from 2013, '14 was approximately $900 a week versus roughly $700 from 2012, '13. Currently, today, they are averaging about $1,200 per week. We are continually trying to find better ways to promote our items and to be able to sell them to the public and help the community. We've also increased our Saturday sales from four days a year to six days to allow the public more accessibility. A lot of our public, because they do work Monday through Friday, they were unable to come on Fridays to be able to utilize our, what we have to offer. So, Saturday sales have definitely helped the community. So, I have a couple of stats on the surplus store really quick, just to share with you. So, last year in 2014, the store's sales were 80,000, roughly $80,000. So far, just this year for 2015, we have already brought in over $26,000. So, the store is definitely, hopefully, increasing. Also, we have, along with the surplus store, we have our vehicle sales, and both our store and our vehicles have increased with more exposure to our Facebook page and our GovDills.com website. Our vehicle sales for 2014 was $228,229. This year so far for our vehicles, we have sold and earned a total of $134,370. So, we are already making great strides to continue making good revenue for the county. And then we also, for our GovDills, in 2014, with our website, we brought in $13,205, and in 2015, currently up to the date, we have brought in $3,801. Also, we have our, like I said, we have our Facebook. When we started, we had roughly 170 viewers. We now are up to 285. So, we keep expanding our, to the public to be able to let us, let them follow us on Facebook. We try to post pictures to give them an idea what we will have new so that our customers will continue coming. So, our next big thing is to help the community. So, one of the biggest things that we are very proud of every year, and it's almost that time, is we have, since 2004, we've been working with the, with the board members and with the Tillery County Schools. And every December, we do our computer giveaway to the students. We normally do, on average, of at least a minimum of 100 computers. We've done up to 120. I believe last year it was 110 that we donated. These computers are given to the students. It gives them the desktop computer, a monitor, a keyboard, and a mouse. These are all at no cost to the students, and they are, the students are chosen by the school administration and the teachers based on the child's need and their accomplishments in school. The only thing that we've ever asked for this program is we reach out to one of our nonprofits, and they donate $500 towards this cause. The rest of the cost, we absorb through our department and through the county to make that always happen every year. So, we're looking forward to that again this next month. Also, we have, during our Friday surplus store sales, we have approximately 75 approved nonprofit organizations that receive merchandise at no cost. During that process, there are some items that we're not able to give to them at no cost, whether it be something that came for another, from another government entity or something that maybe is just a good selling item that we're trying to make sure it's available for the public. Those items, if they really have a need, we have given them drastic discounts, 25% to sometimes 50% off of those costs. We also, for 2013, '14, we actually did donate over $22,000 to our nonprofits. We also have our vehicles that we worked with Jean and the board that we're able to give them a 25% discount off of our surplus sticker price. And then, if there are further needs, then we adjust it even accordingly to that. So, we, we feel that we have definitely been helping the community as much as we can with the items and bringing in some good revenue. So, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Let's make a deal, Lori. Are you in the process of moving into your new quarters yet, or are you getting close?
Yes. Actually, the last I heard is, we're hoping that's going to be my Christmas present this year. That's the last I've heard, is that we're hoping for, hopefully, right before Christmas.
I walked over the other day, and the carpeting's down, and it looks very nice, and I saw all of the merchandise moved over to the other side, and so, I guess I was a little bit surprised by how much of the space is occupied with the computers.
Yes.
That's a lot of computers.
Actually, and a lot of our computers don't even come to our store anymore because there's so many countywide that the IT department, they have their warehouse, and a lot of our stuff that we sell on the stuff that we sell on the GovDills website, they store them on pallets for us until that's sold. So we are working really closely with them to help move that product as fast as we can.
Chairman?
Forward.
Yeah, I remember 11 years ago Supervisor Cox and I had to shop at the surplus store for furniture in our office. It's been a great change, and I think this service that we've been providing to the public is well-received, and especially the nonprofits wouldn't be able to function without the services that your department provides. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on the cars and stuff. You know, I used to kid Al all the time about, you know, Al, I'd go by there, you need to shuffle that lot a little better, you know? You need to move the stuff around a little bit, and I think going out on the dirt helped you too, because if you have a few leakers, it doesn't show up.
Unfortunately, we did have to move them from over there, though, because there was so much vandalism.
Vandalism, yeah.
Because it was such a dark environment that we were having people steal batteries. I have pictures where they were trying to steal tires. I mean, they cut gas lines, they stole the gas out of every car.
Oh, my goodness.
So we did move them back to our old lot over by the surplus store and have been very successful with that so far.
Real challenge, that happens even in the car industry.
Yes.
One real quick comment. Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate the community focus and really trying to do good for the community and our nonprofits. I think that's a really noble effort, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you, Lori. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Lori, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a need for, to add an urgency item, which was just brought to my attention by council. This is a request from our Public Employee Relations Board from the Purb to consider agency shop recension consent election agreement. We know we had a petition filed by a Unit 3 SCIU member, Stacy Farmer, and we have a request for this board to consider paperwork that needs to be signed today. Did I state that sufficiently enough to have that added as a urgency item, council?
Almost.
That's close.
This was not posted on your board's regular agenda, and the reason for that is that this draft arose out of a conference call with the Purb council and your HR director this morning at about 10:00 a.m. Ordinarily, it would not be a problem, but you are not meeting again until December, by which time the election, according to that agreement, would be in swing. So for those reasons, we would request an urgency item be placed on to authorize your HR director to execute this agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we have this item set for urgency on today's agenda.
I'll second.
Moved by Worthley, seconded by Ennis, and is unanimous, we will add this item as an urgency item and will be heard. Rhonda, are you going to be addressing this? And it appears to be, I've read it, it appears to be very straightforward. It sets out the dates by which we are to provide the Purb with the names of the employees of Unit 3, the dates by which they would notify the employees of elections, how we have to post the elections, and when they would actually be casting their ballots.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, during the conference call today, the question of your HR director's authority to sign that agreement was specifically raised. In the past, that has not been the case. I don't know why it would be different now.
Well, since we've added this urgency item, I would be able to sign this, is that correct?
Your board could... Your board has to take action to either authorize you to sign it or your HR director to sign it.
Chairman Cox and members of the board, on the conference call today with Purb and the other two parties, which was represented by SCIU's attorney as well as Stacy Farmer, who submitted the petition, as you stated, the agreement that we're being asked to sign sets forth the provisions of the election. Currently, the tentative dates of the election is, and the process is, the county has to provide an eligibility list of bargaining Unit 3 employees, which currently is 408 employees in that unit. And then Purb will be sending out a notice to the employees' home, noticing them of the election around November 21st, and then we will be posting, the county is responsible for posting a notice on bulletin boards within the departments so that employees are aware of this. And then in December, the 1st of December, December 5th, ballots would be mailed by Purb to the employees, and they're looking at an election potentially of January 5th and January 6th would be when ballot measures, the ballot would be counted. There are two things that could impact this, these dates, they are not confirmed. The SCIU council has to confirm that with Purb on the dates. Also, there is an appeal process, and our understanding is that SCIU could appeal up until November 12th, so it has to go down that track as well.
So the agreement is not yet in final form because the SCIU's employee requested 24 hours in which to consult with the membership to make sure that they would agree to the one month, essentially, a time period in which the membership could vote on this. And the reason for that extended period of time is because of the several holidays that are included within that time period. So there isn't anything final to sign today, but we expect that to be presented to us by the end of the week.
We're going to approve it as to form.
I mean, authorize your chair or your HR director to sign it when it is approved as to form by council, I think would be the...
Any questions? Okay, is it the board's desire to have our HR director or the chair sign it?
What's traditionally been the case? The HR director? I would move that we authorize, that we accept this agreement in concept subject to council's final approval and authorize the HR director to execute the document.
Motion by Worthley.
Second.
Seconded by Ashida. Cast your votes, and is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Council, we also have need for closed session today.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Your board has items A through G on your closed session agenda. A and B are off agenda. Do we expect announcements on... We do anticipate announcements on several items.
Okay, we'll adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Chief Rousseau, County Administrative Officer, reporting at a closed session on item F to consider the public employee appointment for the position of interim county librarian on a motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Worthley. The board voted unanimously to appoint Mike Drake as interim county librarian.